All right, welcome, everyone. I'm Councilmember Zach Hall, and I'm calling the June 10 City Council Planning, Development, and Environment Committee to order at 6:30 PM. I'm joined by Council President Walsh and Councilmember Jiang. Really quickly to run through the agenda, we'll take public comment right up top. Approval of two separate minutes from previous meetings, and then our only item on the agenda is COME 0108, the 2018, or 2018, 2025 Title 18 Policy Amendments. And then we'll do some quick announcements. So we will now move into the first item on our agenda, which is public comment. And before I go into the public comment script, I don't see anyone in the audience from the public. I just want to check if there's anyone online with us from the public.
Chair Hall, we do have a member of the public online with us tonight.
Fantastic. Real quickly, I will say that there are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There's a, like I said, there's a general public comment opportunity now at the top of the meeting, and/or you can wait to make your comments after the presentation in the council question and answer period on tonight's one agenda item. If you signed up advance, in advance, you'll be called on first. And if you're joining us virtually, and it looks like you are, and you want to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. You can do that by, if you're on the phone, pressing star three. Or if you're on your computer or smartphone, look for that hand icon, which varies by device, but look at the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. And then if anyone happens to walk into the room, I'll be sure to ask them as well if they'd like to participate in public comment here at the top. So we'll just wait a quick moment to see if our participant online would like to provide public comment. Again, raise your hand if you would like to. All right. Well, again, there's another opportunity later in the meeting to provide public comment if you'd like to, but as a reminder, written comments are always welcome, and you can email us at any time at citycouncil@isqawatt.gov. So we will now move on to the next item of our agenda, which is approval of both the November 6, 2024, and May 6, 2025, meeting minutes, which were distributed in advance. So I'll ask members of the committee if you had any corrections, or if not, if you're okay approving the minutes by unanimous consent. Okay, so no objections. So the November 6, actually, I'll turn to the clerk really quick. Is it okay to take action by unanimous consent on both meeting minutes, or do we need to do it separately?
Yes, it is, Chair.
Okay, perfect.
You can do that.
Then, hearing done, both the November 6, 2024, and May 6, 2025, meeting minutes are approved as presented. And we'll move into our next item on the agenda, which is COME 0108, the 2025 Title 18 Policy Amendments, brought to us by Acting Planning Manager Kristin Leeson. Take it away.
Good evening. Yes, I am Kristin Leeson, Acting Planning Manager for Community Planning and Development Department. Tonight, we are looking for two things from you all. One is, are the proposed changes clear, or do they need some additional changes? And does the committee recommend moving these forward to the June 23 council meeting for action? So we're doing this because it is about quality control. So as you know, we updated our Title 18, a complete overhaul, which included combining several different documents and about 580 pages. And in doing that, you are bound to come across some mistakes. People from the public or development will point out to you things that they think could work better. And the state provides changes for us as well. So we came to you with clarifying amendments earlier in the year, and tonight, we're doing what we're calling policy amendments, but we've broken them up into three different categories. We have minor, which are still sort of clarifying amendments, which just need to be taken care of. State-required amendments, because once the state legislature finished, there were quite a few things that we needed to do by June, or by the end of this year. And then policy amendments as well, things that were identified by staff that needed to be changed. So I'm going to start with the minor amendments. First, we have adult family homes and daycare centers. So this was confusing, because they are allowed by right in single, in residential zones, all residential zones, yet they were still being required to get a home occupation permit, which makes no sense. So we removed them from home occupations. We clarified daycare centers versus family care centers. We created their own section. They were both in residential and commercial, but because they can go in both, we created an own section for them, 18.522, and just tried to clean all of that up. Next, we have legislative action exemptions. We had some unnecessary steps that were being taken, and when a developer comes in, they submit an application, and we're required to send out notification to all property owners within 500 feet. Well, to do legislative amendments, there is no notice, so we don't send them out. And we, you know, we do public hearing notices everywhere, not just within 500 feet. So we decided that those are exempt from those processes. Land use permit extensions, it was in the code already, but it wasn't clear that the expiration time for the land use permit applies to the building permit. So we just put that in there to clarify, you know, the land use permit, and then when the building permit timeframe takes over, we tried to fix that. It was unclear. Table of permitted uses, we actually had uses that were omitted during the update. We also had uses that we discovered were added in different zones through the update, but you see all those little squares, they were just put in the wrong ones. And so we just fixed that to clean it up, to match what was done in Title 18. Our intent with Title 18 was not to change any of the existing uses, so we took it back to what it was. Parking corrections, we had accidentally omitted senior and assisted parking during the Title 18 update, and so we added those two uses back in, and then we based their ratios on the new city standards that had been established during the update. Additional height applicability, there was, it was misinterpreted in the new code. It was, so to go above the base height, there are requirements that you must meet in order to do that. It only applied, it did not apply to Central Issaquah. So we won applicability, we added that that applies, we clarified which zones those apply to. They also stated that you couldn't go more than, you know, if you're going to go 65 feet above the base height. Well, if your base height's 40 feet, we don't want you going up to 105 feet in a medium family residential zone. So we corrected that as well. Central Issaquah Development Bonus Program. The primary reason for that program is to get affordable housing within Central Issaquah. Yet, Fee and Lue, the fact that you could use the Fee and Lue funds for affordable housing was left out of the update. So we added that back in, and we also took out the staff responsibility for approval of expenditures for funding, because when you get up to, you know, that amount of money, that is up to the city council. So electrical vehicle standards, our table was out of date with the building codes, so we removed it. And replacement of omitted footnotes, what we tried to do in the update was take, we had, I think, 24 footnotes underneath the permitted uses table, and we took all of those, and we thought we had taken all of them, and put them in as regulations in various places in the code. Well, it turns out, we left some out, having to do mostly with office uses in residential zones, both multifamily and single-family. So again, we created a new section just for office uses in residential zones, and put those requirements there. Is it okay if I move on, or do you want to ask any questions about the clarifications? Move on? Okay. Moving on to state-required amendments. The first one is the state requirement to allow for commercial and mixed-use buildings to be converted to multifamily within the existing structure. And there are some things that came with that, and then a parking. We can require the retention of existing parking. We can also allow the non-conforming parking to remain. We cannot require more parking that would typically be needed to meet whatever is there. They are exempt from concurrency. They are exempt from density. And if you're in a zone where they allow 14 dwelling units per acre, they can actually go 50% over that, so they can now allow, they can now find a way to fit 21 units per acre into that existing structure. And then they are also exempt from design standards. So whereas, and we'll talk about later, we currently require that you put balconies on individual units, we cannot require them to do that. That's just an example. Residential parking configurations and electric vehicle charging infrastructure, there were numerous updates in the Washington Administrative Code. Some included new EV standards, language for different types of uses, so such as the conversions, middle housing, co-living. Updated accessible parking standards, removed, we are no longer allowed to require structured parking in multifamily buildings, so we took that out. We now allow grass block pavers as pervious surface, and there's a tree retention exemption. So if you have a choice between having to meet your parking code regulations and your tree retention regulations, tree retention regulations win, and you may not get all the parking that you would typically require. Last state-required amendment is co-living, which requires, a House Bill of 1998 requires cities to allow co-living housing in all zones that allow residential uses, including mixed-use zones. So we added definition of co-living, which also includes single-room occupancies. There is also an exemption for parking, that they, we cannot require parking within half a mile of a transit center, and we can only allow a quarter of a space per unit, which means per room, that's in there. And then I have an asterisk by this one, because when I was talking with Commerce, they said, where are all the state requirements? I said, we usually refer to those just by reference and say, see RCW this, so that we don't have to change every time they change. But they really wanted them in there, so we just added the state requirements in there. And that's one thing that has changed since the public hearing, but because it's something we can't argue with, we went ahead and put it in there. Right? Would you like me to go on? Questions? Okay. Policy amendments. The first one was wayfinding. We had a standard that said you have to put in wayfinding, but we didn't have any details to go along with it. So we included specifics on what and where and how. Heat pump and mechanical equipment setbacks, we'd gotten complaints about noise levels, and so we fixed that. We're different. We're not urban. Our standards were for more, sorry, we are urban. Our standards were for more rural areas, and our decibel levels were too high. People couldn't meet those, and so we lowered the maximum decibel level, and we gave mitigating measures. So if you can't fully meet that, just with the mechanical equipment by itself, then you can screen it with shrubbery, or fencing, or placing it further away, or closer to the house than it's supposed to be, or put it in quiet mode if that's available. Rooster and chicken husbandry. Yes?
Just a quick question. How do we, how do we enforce decibel levels? Is that something done by the city level, or how does that, how does that happen on the ground level?
Sure. In terms of the, this is many dally, well, just for the record. So the way the heat pump permits are issued, they're online, you know, there's no review required, per se, because it's just verification of it in the field. But before they apply, we kind of give them, here's what you need to meet as part of the application process. So they have to provide their specifications to the inspector out in the field that shows what their decibel levels are. The measurement of decibel levels is complex, so if we get complaints from someone, you know, we would probably need a noise expert to go, because there's ambient noise levels. If an airplane is flying by, what does that do to your noise level versus a freeway going by? So you really have to account for a lot of those things to say if there's a violation of the noise code or not. In this case, in the case of the heat pumps, some of the HOAs that we talked to, you know, Talus being one, and Highlands being one, they indicated that Talus in particular had done a lot of work, and they said DBAs are kind of difficult. And so we just use this institute of heating and refrigeration institute has a 270, you know, standard. So I think our code language kind of reflects some of that, that, you know, you either meet this, or you meet that, that kind of a thing. But it's almost equal to about 73 decibels, whereas the state law that we were in compliance with before was 55 decibel levels in residential areas. So we asked Ecology, who creates the state law, to see if they could just, you know, how are they doing it for other cities, and could they just change it at the state level so each of these cities doesn't have to do it? Because people were struggling, like, you know, other cities. Seattle came up with a very elaborate table where they calculate the, based on distance and square, someone, you know, we were using that for a little while, but again, it becomes more complex than what it's, the intended outcome is. So Ecology didn't have the bandwidth to deal with this, and, but the state law also required that we give them 90-day notice. So that's why this got, you know, attached this time around, not the first time around in the iteration. But to answer your question, how do we measure it? We get their specifications that show their decibel levels as part of the permit process. And then if a complaint comes, and it's too noisy, at that point, we can go out with a noise meter reader. We do have one, the city has one, however, it can be debatable. And so then we would hire an acoustical engineer to actually take the readings if it became an issue.
Okay. Fascinating. Interesting. Thank you very much. Any other questions from committee? All right. Go for it.
All right. Thank you. Back to roosters and chickens. We had fairly specific code in our regulations in our previous code, and when we updated, we just said, let's use the county code. But the county code is intended for more rural areas than Issaquah has. So we added things about the age of roosters, because apparently, once, you know, they hit a certain age, their voices change, and they get a lot louder. The minimum size of lots on where you could have roosters, and then the size and distance of dwelling shelters from property lines, and running spaces where they can run, and so forth. A similar thing with bees and beekeeping. We, again, switched over to the county code, said, nope, too rural for us, we're more of an urban environment. And so we reestablished our previous code that we had in place, clarified it a little bit, defined nuisance, again, for noise, and then we improved enforceability, which, no, I should say, those things will improve enforceability. And then last, but not least, we have common and private amenity space. We have received some concern from developers that the amount of private and common amenity space that we require is very difficult to do in this climate. And what we currently require is for each unit in a multifamily home, or multifamily complex, that each unit has 100 square feet of common amenity space, to be indoor or outdoor, plus an additional 48 square feet of amenity space, outdoor amenity space, attached to their unit. And they say that that's difficult. So we have proposed a deviation that each unit is still required to have 148 square feet. But this can, some of this can just all be put into common space. 50% of the units still have to have 48 square feet attached to their unit. But the other 50% of the units, they can just throw all of that 148 square feet into the various amenity spaces, indoor and outdoor. So, but the, right. So the proposal is that all 148 square feet, how 148 square feet could be combined into the indoor and outdoor amenity space, rather than having all, you know, 48 square feet attached to each unit?
Yeah, just to clarify, it's all outdoor, common open spaces outdoor, and balconies are also outdoor. There's a separate requirement, I believe, for 400 square feet for dwelling units, over 22 units that can be indoor. That's above and beyond the 148.
I apologize. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. We have a question here, if that's okay. Council President?
Why did we consider using a deviation rather than just changing the code? If we're hearing from developers that this is too expensive and it's preventing housing, doesn't making it a deviation mean that somebody has to know they can get a deviation, decide that they think they're going to get it before buying the property? Like, wouldn't that cause a problem?
I think first, they need to prove to us that they really can't do it, that it's not feasible, because our preference is to have 48 square feet attached to each unit. So first, they would need to show us that it is infeasible for them really to be able to do this, and if they can't, then this is another option.
And how do we define infeasible? Do we define it as it physically can't work, or it monetarily can't work?
Monetarily.
Okay. Okay.
They've also said, in some cases, part of this, it came up at Planning Policy Commission, is that some developers say that it's too difficult, it becomes infeasible financially because it requires extra sealants, water can get in there, that kind of thing. So it is, it can be a little bit more expensive.
I have a couple of questions on this item, too. So the public comment that we received referred to previous code that was just 48 square feet. Is that right? So how was that, what was the mix breakdown of that? Was that all private amenity space, or was that also have some element of common amenity space to that?
Do you remember the old code?
Yeah, under the, that was only for Central Issaquah areas. 48 could be, could be private or common. People had the option to do one or the other. They could choose to put it all in a common space, or they could do balconies for each one.
Okay.
Six-by-eight balcony for each one would get them there, or they would count the number of units, multiply by 48, and provide one common open space.
Okay. Thank you. And then, we did talk a little bit about this when we were talking about the TOD a few weeks ago, right? The TOD project. And I can't remember exact, I mean, we ended up in a very similar, if not the exact same, deviation process here, which I'm sure has, is the reason why we have it as a policy amendment here today. But we had also talked about kind of framing up a community conversation, because it seemed like a number of us on council were interested in revisiting the code in the requirement itself. Can you, can you remind me kind of where we fell out in that conversation, or where we ended up in that conversation, and if staff took any particular direction there?
Yeah, for the TOD project, what they're asking for is to get what's in the code here. So combine, let developers combine the two spaces and provide it as one common open space. So for their affordable building that didn't have any balconies, and everything, 148 per unit is all in a common space. For the market rate, they had, they have some balconies, but not each unit has a balcony. But we don't know the percentage at, you know, at this point, for, because I think the proposed code is at least 50% still have to have a balcony.
Okay, yeah, and I only ask that because I know, right? I'm pretty sure we had a bit of a conversation up on the dais, too, about us just wanting to revisit the requirement at all in the first place, and whether or not this is the right mix, and if whether 148 was the right number. But I think we settled with, yes, that's a good conversation to have in the future where we can involve the community. And I was just wondering if staff had taken any direction for that, or added it to a particular list of things to consider, or if that's something we should talk about up here tonight.
We can, you can, we can continue to add that to the future discussions. For this iteration of the code that's in front of us, we did do an informal look at the other cities initially, when we had recommended, you know, administration's recommendation at that time during Title 18 update was 100 square feet per unit. But through the community process with the discussion with the boards and commissions, 100 remained, but in addition, this balcony requirement was added back in the code through that public conversation with the boards and commissions. So that's what council adopted as part of the Title 18 update, was the 148, 148 for the, for the balconies.
Okay. Any other questions on that particular? No? All right. If I can move on?
Next steps, this would, if you all choose to move this forward, this would go to council for action on June 23. And that's what I have. We recommend moving it forward to June 23 as presented. And again, a reminder, the direction needed is, are these changes clear, clear and reasonable, or do they need additional changes? And do you all recommend moving it forward? That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much for all the work that's gone into that. I appreciate it. Opening up for questions from the committee, we've had a chance to ask some of them, but any other kind of lingering questions on people's minds? Yeah, Councilmember Jiang?
This is a, kind of going back to what we were talking about previously. What was the rationale for adding, you know, from the community through that process of adding in the requirement of having balconies on every unit?
Yeah, you know, it's not necessarily balconies. It can be patio space on the ground level, it can be your designated spot in the common open space where you get your, you know, to grow your vegetables or anything like that. So it isn't necessarily just balconies, it's your private open space. So just want to be clear that, but the rationale was that people that live in multifamily units also desire their own space. And, you know, so therefore, that was in addition to the common open space. From a user's perspective, I think, is what they were thinking.
Anything else? All right. The, just out of curiosity, the code changes, amendments around chickens, no, the roosters and chicken husbandry, and the bees and beekeeping, is that because community members came to us, or is that because we just, oh, we forgot to, or we realized that maybe, yeah, we're more urban than rural, and we should change that?
Community members came. Yes.
Okay. Good to know.
And also, I think our code enforcement officer, who used to work for King County, was familiar with the King County code. So the rationale for using King County code was, we have an animal section of the code, Title 11, that's used for who does animal control. And then there were Title 18 animal regulations, and so it seemed, why have two different standards, kind of a thing? So we went with King County at the time, but the rooster noise issue, I think, came from a community member. And bees, I think someone was interested in keeping bees, and we were trying to find what regulation would apply to them. Because I think the rationale for not having that initially was, Department of Agriculture regulates beekeeping, and so they have their own set of rules and regulations. But I think the impact to neighbors and all that kind of stuff from bees then was sort of the missing piece that this is fixing.
All right. All right. If we have no more questions, then thank you, and we'll move on to public comment. Do we still have a member of the public with us online?
Yes, we do, Chair.
Great. Well, thank you again for being with us. Just a reminder that if you raise your hand, or raise your hand if you're interested in participating in public comment on this particular item with regard to the Title 18 Policy Amendments. As a reminder, to do that, if you're on the phone, you can press star three. If you're on your computer, look for that hand icon. If you look at the participant panel, you should be able to find that hand icon that you can click to raise your hand to provide public comment. So I'll just go back to the clerk and see if you're interested in providing public comment.
No desire to speak indicated, Chair.
Okay. Well, again, thank you very much for spending your sunny evening with us tonight, and feel free to write us if you have any thoughts on the item as it heads to council out of committee eventually. All right. So now we're on to council direction, and the questions were, I've got it here. Are the proposed changes clear and reasonable, or are additional changes needed, and should we proceed with moving the amendments forward to the June 23 council meeting? So who would like to go first? Councilmember Jiang, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's good for us to be compliant with state law and responsive to the needs of the community, so I think it makes sense for us to approve these. I did also have a couple, like, very minor grammatical edits, which I believe were incorporated as well. So thanks for being receptive to those Oxford commas. It's one of my pet issues.
Great. Council President Walsh?
Thank you. So I agree on the state compliance and fixing of minor errors. Those are great. Never going to say no to those. And for the policy issues, I don't generally have any issues with proposed changes, other than I really do think the open space adjustment doesn't go far enough. But when I kind of take a step back and look at the proposal, I started to question, like, what problem are we trying to solve here? And who are we listening to when defining that problem or the solutions? Like, I can clearly see the connection from community members that talked about not being able to install heat pumps, and how we were trying to address that. But it seems like we've heard much more clearly from the development community over the last 12 to 18 months than we have previously, which I think is a great thing, because we have definitely seen an inability to get projects happening that would house our community members. And so, and then we also, we got the community survey results. And so we heard very clearly from community members that they care about housing affordability and costs, the ease of creating new businesses, and the ability to cite childcare. And so I guess I would have hoped that our annual updates were trying to solve some of those issues, trying to pick an issue and address it, and try to identify what we've heard from stakeholders. And so I know we're still working through the tree code, but I really wish we had started to address childcare. to address childcare. I think with the outdoor space, you know, as somebody who came up through the planning commission, I know that when staff talked to us, I was on the planning commission when we created the structured parking requirement, and staff talked to us and they said, hey, if we don't do this, stuff is going to get built with, you know, big parking lots and here are the reasons we would want to adopt that. You don't necessarily hear a lot of, but here's the downside, here's what it could cost us in development, things like that. And so as much as I think the community does desire having open space and individual open space, I don't know whether we can clearly say, that's the hill we're going to die on even if housing doesn't get built. I think when we're looking at particularly affordable housing and being told that this is going to be too expensive, or we're going to get this affordable housing project, but then the market rate project that was supposed to help pay for that is probably not going to come in for years, like, I feel like these are problems that we've been told need to be addressed. And so that and step backs, I guess I'm just a little bit disappointed that we're not seeing movement on some of those issues and also just trying to understand, how did these come up and the others didn't? And so maybe that's the question I will ask is, why did these step forward and other things that we heard not get addressed in this annual update?
Other things, I mean, we've brought forward what we've heard. So the step back, there's a provision in here that's clarifying that about the 25% reduction in the upper floors is only for properties not in central Issaquah. That provision doesn't apply in central Issaquah. So that's in, in the proposed amendments. The open space requirement, you know, because the community just adopted these codes, we didn't go and change, want to change the standard at this point because we've heard from the TOD folks, but they're meeting what is in the code, right, here in front of you. So they're making a pencil out for their affordable unit to have 148 square feet in their one large open space. So, but if there are others you guys are hearing from, we'd love to hear as well, the ones that we may have missed bringing forth. But, but we keep a list, whatever we hear, we try to bring forward.
So my thoughts on the step backs is, we heard from the developer that having it happen at a material change was what was important. And so it wasn't just that this doesn't need to happen or doesn't, it wasn't central Issaquah versus outside. It was, this is going to cost multiple million dollars more because we're doing it at a particular floor level at, within the wood structure. So is that something that we can address?
With this round, with this suite of proposals that you have, or are we adding to the list? So you're asking whether we should include the flexibility to allow the step back at the third floor where the material changes? So that was included in the Title 18 update, but it only applies to the natural context area. So at the time, the TOD development folks were involved with the Title 18 update and, and the issue was stepping it back when you're facing a natural context area. So there is flexibility when you're next to a natural area that you can do the step back at a third floor. So in, in the case of their current proposal, they wanted also the step back at the third floor along the street. And so that's what they've proposed and is part of the housing cooperative agreement. The other, one other developer that has stated an issue was more about the 25% reduction in floor area, which is getting addressed as part of this code. But the step back at the upper floors is really a design, you know, manual issue. So if you choose one of the five architectural design standards, Northwest Contemporary is one of them, that has that requirement of a step back on the upper floor, just to break down the mass of the building. And we did take Planning and Policy Commission on a tour of the housing, and they looked at the Kirkland examples where there was a step back and they found that design much more appealing. And then we took them to Red, you know, showed them the Redmond examples where there was more of a straight street wall and that was not their prefer, preference. So we were having those conversations and in this stuff that is in front of council tonight, it includes some fixes, maybe if it needs more re-look next year, we can certainly continue to work through that. Or you want us to go back?
I heard a lot of details about when this applies in a natural context zone and whether or not it applies on this side of the building or that or, you know, all of that. That to me just says that we've made a very complex code. So I don't entirely understand what you were saying about the step backs, whether or not that solves the cost issue, whether or not that means there is step backs on one side of the building versus another, whether or not that means that it has to continue stepping back, whether that means a reduction in housing.
Yeah, with the natural context, the, the architectural design manual and the central Issaquah design standards, the last Title 18 code update didn't make any changes to those. They lowered some of those standards by allowing flexibility of step backs along the natural context to be lowered at the third floor. So just to, to kind of from, you know, central Issaquah design standards were put in place, Title 18 golden outcomes were not to change the design standards of those at that point. It was to consolidate in best practice and all that. So we moved forward as is, but we heard from the TOD development to have some flexibility along natural context. That was built in. And now I think this is building flexibility for, for the open space, but the step back provision still remains. But we have clarified that the 25% reduction in floor area on the upper floors only applies in these lower zones that have a lower height, not in central Issaquah. I know it's complex and we're happy to come back and give more information to council if you want us to detail it out.
Mr. Chair? If I can maybe add a couple additional comments, I don't want to interrupt the council president. You know, certainly, this is the council committee's opportunity to provide the very feedback you're providing. And so as you deliberate this evening and make recommendations to your colleagues, if you feel that there are specific issues that need additional attention at this time, I would encourage you to make that part of your recommendation to the full council. In talking with Mayor Polly specifically about some of these setback issues, you know, her concern is, yes, we've heard from developers, but we have not heard from members of our community. And so if this is a priority for the council, I think then the administration would want to come back and give you a timetable for community dialogue, late summer, early fall, and then also tell you what else may not happen. We are currently down three planners out of a six planner division. You know, we have also heard from the community that processing current planning applications is extremely important, and so we want to make sure we have the staffing to do that. But if the council is not satisfied with certain of these and you would like us to see a different timeframe, I would encourage you to ask your colleagues to recommend that at full council, and then the administration can come back and tell you what it will take to do that. Again, Mayor Polly has been concerned that, given the work plan that we have for a six person planning division, we were going to be under difficulty. A three person planning division makes it harder. But it's your job to do what you're doing, and that is reviewing this, your sense of the community standards, your sense of where things are. And if you feel what you're hearing tonight is not satisfactory or needs a different timeframe, I would encourage you to let your colleagues in the full council know that and then have that discussion at full council.
Yeah, so what I would say is, I just want to be able to go back to the community and say, we heard that part of our code was unintentionally inflating housing costs and we listened to that and we addressed it. And we didn't just address it for the one building, but we took that learning because we couldn't unsee it and were able to go back. So I hear that you're saying something about there was a change to step backs that doesn't allow me to say, go back to the community and say, this has been fixed. So I don't have enough information on what the changes are proposed here to be able to answer that. So I think my preference would be, I'm fine to adopt this because it seems to be an adjustment, but I don't feel like it addresses the need in front of us. And I would say I hear the idea of needing to go back to the community and the idea that we have a limited number of staffers. I think this is the absolute lowest hanging fruit that we've ever been given, which is to say, look, you do this, it costs a million dollars that we as council didn't even think looked better. Or you don't do this and look, it just wipes a million dollars off the cost. So I would hope that that would sway folks to understand that, yes, maybe this jumps ahead of some other things as a way that we can tangibly listen to the information we're being provided.
Councilmember Jane?
Yeah, I mean, I'm new here, so I'm not super familiar with like the timeline of when, you know, we pass Title 18 updates and all that. So is this like a once a year thing?
Excuse me. We have been making it a twice a year thing to do deeper amendments and clarifying amendments. So twice a year. We can amend the code at any time during the year, unlike the comprehensive plan, which is just once a year. So it is something that could be addressed at another time.
Yeah, a little bit more context of, you know, when the overhaul of Title 18 was done, we did commit to coming, doing this at least once a year, of maintaining a list of issues that come up during that year and try and fix them as we go. Because what had happened in the past was, you know, you, a lot of time goes by and then, and, you know, the issues didn't get addressed. So at least, the commitment was at least once a year we would do it. But the way it's worked out and practical is that we've had to come in twice because otherwise it becomes too many ordinances. And so we've tried to move things along that are easy and then some policy ones that follow.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, I agree with Council President Walsh that I think, you know, some of these things that have been surfaced through the, you know, trans, the TOD project, we really should be looking more seriously at those, especially this setback issue. And so, and I think it's probably fine for us, if it's, you know, every six months is probably fine for us to, you know, go through the community engagement project process, figure out how that aligns with other, you know, planning priorities. But do you want to emphasize that that is something that's really important? Because, I mean, the fact that we updated the code in 2023 and we're just now getting the first project getting built to this new code is certainly interesting and a sign that perhaps we aren't really building that many more homes in Issaquah that we think that we need to build. So definitely support looking more into these types of issues that have been surfaced by the TOD project.
Well, I'll just throw my feedback in, too. And I think, I think for the most part, we're all showing up pretty much in the same way here. First and foremost, just to say that I think that the suite of amendments you have here is good, has gone through the public process and we should adopt them. So I'm perfectly fine moving forward with them, moving them forward to the council meeting on, when was it, later this month?
Twenty, June 23rd.
Yeah, so yeah. I think that makes sense. I, yeah, was coming into this thinking, I would love to also have kind of a broader conversation at some point, too, around step backs, too, which was brought up, but the amenity space requirement. And have we, have we set that at the right place? And, and what is our value here in terms of having amenity space or, or having outdoor, like amenity space near, so near so much, amenity space that exists in the city or making housing a bit cheaper? And just to have a deep conversation as a council and have community feedback feed into that, too. So wherever that fits into the process, I'd love to do that. And I think that's kind of where we ended up as a council anyways, when we first talked about this at, within the context of the TOD, saying, we want to solve the immediate problem with this deviation process, which we're now putting in code, and then have kind of a broader conversation. And City Administrator Bob Quitz, I appreciate, too, saying with this feedback, then coming back and saying, okay, we can do that, but given staff capacity, here's what then we won't be able to do. So I would welcome us having that, that conversation as well.
And I would encourage you to report all this out to your colleagues.
I can do that.
Because that is an appropriate conversation for the seven. There may be even an opportunity at the July 12th council retreat to talk more broadly about Title 18. You know, I think the administration's concern is just timeframes and priorities.
Yeah.
I hope you're not hearing any objection to anything you're saying. I think it's just a management of resources and priorities. And if the council would like to talk about that when this comes back in June, likes to talk about it in July or some future date, that's great. We just need to then come back to you and say, this is how we can do it, and this might not happen or get, other things get delayed in order to make that a priority.
Okay. So then, to ask a question about that, would it make sense? So I'm happy reporting out this conversation and highlighting some of the policy questions that exist outside of the amendments that we'll, that we'll adopt as a council when I report back to the council. Would we want that to be part of a regular business item, this coming to regular business at council, or put this on consent? I guess that's more of a question for the committee, too, if you have any thoughts on that. But first, I'll go to City Administrator, see if you have any thoughts.
You know, I think that there's a larger question here for this committee. This committee has been charged by your colleagues to worry about land use code issues. This is a larger land use code issue, that there are, that are, there are pieces of Title 18, which you've heard from members of the community that perhaps need additional attention sooner than later. And so I think if you can report that out, get some feedback from your colleagues, it probably makes sense that this happened on regular business. And then depending on what you hear from your colleagues, then perhaps there's a future item that either at a committee, the whole, or comes back to this committee to talk about the specifics, some timing issues in order to move this forward.
Any other feedback from committee members, then? Yeah?
Just a question, when is tree code coming through?
We have environmental board meeting tomorrow. So this is their other touch and we got some feedback from them. They wanted more, you know, there was some feedback about setting up a subcommittee for it, but we'll see what, you know, they figure out tomorrow. Then we go to PPC in July.
August. July. It is July, we're July.
Yeah.
We just adjusted the schedule today, so it is, yeah.
And then September to PDE.
Okay.
Because you're off in August.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to see how everything was traveling together. Thanks.
And they've been doing a really good job with it, and lots of community members have been involved in that tree code work. So thank you, staff, for working with them on that and with environmental board as well. Any other comments about the suite of amendments? Did you get all the feedback you needed? Anything else in particular you want to suss out or is that, is that good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, then. So that was our only agenda item, so we'll move on to the next item, which is announcements. Any announcements by, I'm not seeing, same me? I'll just say then, then the next meeting is scheduled for July 8th, and the preliminary agenda includes, this is exciting, COM 0142 Bellevue College Development Agreement Extension Request and COM 0156 Impact and Mitigation Fee Update. So there being no further business, we're adjourned at 7:19 PM.